Well, one of the things I wanted to share with you is how we anticipate, uh, this, um, plan, what the process is for what remains, you know, before it becomes officially the plan for the campus. If I can get this thing to open up. Hmm, there we go. Just apologize for the speed of my computer. It's working. I think.
There we go.
Okay. So, this is, uh, briefly how we think it's gonna work at this point. We are currently at the, uh, at the top here, at the town hall meeting. And following this meeting, we will have another, uh, a meeting of the university planning steering committee. And that committee will review the comments, uh, that are made today and the ones that we received earlier. And see whether, uh, any revisions to the plan are necessary, um, hopefully minor. Uh, and then the final version would be issued. And the final version then would be the one that the committee as a, um, university committee would forward to the president as his recommendation, and at the same time it would be routed to the senate via the academic planning committee. And the senate would, uh, decide whether or not to endorse it. And so that, hopefully if that vote is positive, that will go along with the recommendation from the steering committee to the president, and the president would take final action on the plan. Um, so, um, you know, we'll try to do that as, as expeditiously as possible. Um, we haven't finalized the, uh, the timeline. It's, I doubt if it's going to come to the senate before next semester. Uh, so, um, that gives us more or less the timeframe. It'll, it'll happen sometime next semester that this process will be completed. Right? I see Scott nodding over there, so. Okay, so that's basically the process and where we are in it. And, uh, as I was saying a minute ago. Come on now. There. Uh, there have been comments posted, uh, on Cafe SSU that we will also review, um, our next meeting. So... How many of you had a chance to, uh, can I ask for a show of hands how many people had a chance to look at the, uh, all the stuff that's on the web about the plan? Okay, not everybody, but a few people. Let me just very briefly outline what's there. The front page, if you, this, this page is what, you know, if you start from here and you click on this, you go to this page, and that page shows you an introductory narrative about what the strategic plan is all about, what its main, uh, elements are, mission, vision, values, strategic areas, and initiatives. Uh, and then it also includes on the side here the, uh, the entire plan. The various areas that we've identified in the developing this plan, as well as the, uh, uh, new university wide funding initiatives that came out, um, uh, as an outcome of those discussions. So, uh, as you can see, the major areas are academic programs, community engagement, diversity, enrollment management, external support, faculty and staff, infrastructure, quality of the student experience, and sustainability. It's a pretty long list, um, for strategic areas, but that's about as far as we could whittle it down to. Uh, I think that when you have a plan with this many areas, uh, the plan really, uh, is more of the kind of a plan that gives you a pretty balanced picture of what all of the university priorities are, both new and continuing. Uh, so it, it, it should reflect more or less what the institution is, is about, uh, in a pretty thorough way. Within each of these areas then there are, uh, specific goals, um, that have been identified. Like, say in academic programs, uh, we have these objectives here and this goal. And, um, providing an excellent teaching and learning environment, providing a nurturing and supportive environment for faculty, um, strengthening our, uh, academic programs themselves, establishing cultural competence, um, and responding to the economic and social needs of the community. So those are all objectives within the academic programs area. And each one of these areas have similar objectives. And, um, so we, you know, in this plan, as you, um, as you saw on the previous page, has been, we've been working on this for quite a while. This version six, 1.6, is dated March two thousand eight. So because it is our first, uh, university strategic plan that follows this kind of process, uh, questions of process have, have really taken up as much time, if not more, than questions of substance. And, uh, we're all feeling our way through this, and, and I'm, uh, very hopeful that once we have gone through a complete cycle, that subsequent cycles of revision and updates are going to be more, proceed more smoothly and, and, um, more efficiently. Um, but this is, we only have about an hour, correct? And, and we wanna focus on getting your feedback and your thoughts, um, so, and I have Sean here who's taking notes, so your, your thoughts will be captured as well as the video. Uh, so I, I would like to, uh, open it for comments from any of the other members of the committee, um, before we open it up to general comments and questions from the audience. So any other committee members wanna say anything at this point? Scott? Any thoughts?
I don't know.
Okay, Art?
I think what's there is pretty good. I think, um, as you said, a lot of issues have to do with process, and I think it's gonna be interesting to see what happens when we take it through, like you see into the academic senate. I think that the issues that, I see possibly coming up are, well, actually there are three issues. One is do we need a, a scaled-down version to deal with the crisis situation before we get back into growth? Uh, second is, um, other things we left out. And, um... I don't remember through what, but we'll come back. Anyway, I think those are two big ones, which are the things we left out, and, and do we need something? Oh, I know what the other one is. Is there any point to kind of weighting the areas that are in there? That's one of the things that's come up in faculty and staff. Or some areas more urgency than others? Uh, and particularly I think that's been acute in terms of the fact that we're in a climate cycle, predicated on a couple of years of probably no growth.
You know, I've, I've, I've looked at many strategic plans for many different universities, and I have yet to see one in which the actual plan itself is prioritized. Um, it seems like there are always, you know, this, the broad, big picture. And then the prioritization happens at the level of specific initiatives or, um, budget, uh, budget, uh, allocations that are, flow out of the plan. That's where the prioritization is revealed, uh, rather than in the, uh, plan itself. And to that effect, we should also highlight the new university-wide funding initiatives that, um, were actually, uh, and will continue to follow. Um, the, again, some of these are not currently active because we have no growth. Um, so, but there is a commitment to fund growth, uh, fully, which means, uh, basically buffer the instructional, um, growth funding from any kind of off-the-top, uh, type of assessments, uh, that are needed for other things. Uh, so that, that full funding at, at the SFR of eighteen point nine and, uh, uh, with a seventy-five, twenty-five breakdown between full-time and part-time faculty, the commitment to, uh, build a one million dollar faculty development fund, uh, and to, uh, to, uh, uh, to go to a, an SFR that is, uh, at least at the CSU average, and working on repairing the base. And these are continuing commitments, and in fact, to this, there is another commitment that was added. Uh, I guess if you would say it be a way of operationalizing the, the base, the repairing the base is, uh, the one million dollar academic quality, um, commitment as well, uh, by the president. So those are things that, uh, one could argue are, uh, specific priorities, budget, you know, allocation priorities that have come out of, uh, looking at, uh, our strategic plan on the one hand and, uh, the, the realities on the other. So, um, so the SFR, for example, for growth, obviously that isn't working until the growth money resumes. Um, so that's where the, the two interface. Any other comments? Uh, yes?
Uh, I came into the process rather, rather lightly, but I, but I was, that I was impressed by the process. From what I saw, it was, the, the plan came out of a wide array of separate committees working together to ultimately craft a document that, that I think is, is fine for, because I think it, it encompasses a lot of things, but that's what a strategic plan ought to do. Um, I am probably more interested in the, in the campus conversation about, about the plan than I am the plan itself. I, I feel that the plan is really, really kind of in shape, but we, I think that what this plan, its real strength is not, is... Well, certainly its strength is in specific direction that it will give some various units. But even more than that, the, the importance of this plan is the power it has to help us as a campus become a planning community. And I think that, that a lot of the challenges that, that accrued around the plan are exactly about the adjustment of the campus to becoming a planning community. So, I'm, I'm very interested in, in the shape of the talk about the plan personally. So I, I look forward to continued conversation, and certainly in the senate, I hope that we'll see it prepared.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I just wanna, if I just respond to, to Scott, I think that's a very important aspect of, of any process of strategic planning, is the process itself, the impact it has on the participants. Uh, it, it, it transforms, uh, the, um, relationships, the way members of the community interact with each other, and helps develop, uh, a more, um, complex and comprehensive sort of mental map of the institution that each of its members has. So that's one great benefit. It's ultimately, ultimately the plan itself will never satisfy, uh, everybody and may never satisfy anybody fully. Uh, but the process of getting to it meant that everyone has gone through, um, a learning process in which they, they start developing, uh, new, new skills and, and approaches to, to handling issues. It helps, it helps us move away from, uh, responding only to specific crises or, or, or coming up with ad hoc solutions and looking at our own institution more systematically. So that part of it is, is all to the good. And I would certainly, but one of the things that, that, that is a part of this process and a part of the planning culture that, um, that, you know, we're hoping to develop is that we need to be able to achieve closure at some point, uh, before starting the cycle again. Um, so it is important, as important as this process is, it's important that the process actually conclude. And, and that we actually do get to the point where we adopt the plan, even if it's, even if the minute we adopt the plan, we know that it's not, uh, as good, you know, that we could already think of ways in which the plan can be improved. The point is that, uh, we, we, we are able to start something and finish it, and then start again. It's a process of continuous improvement. But, but rather than, you know, it's a little bit, and I think academics understand this, you, you know, we all went through, uh, graduate school, and we know of people who were ABDs when we came in and are still ABDs, and they never get to finish their dissertation because they wanna make it their magnum opus, and it never happens. And so we have to avoid that syndrome when it comes to generating a university plan as well. Uh, it will never be perfect in the sense that it embodies the perfect shared governance process or, or has the perfect set of categories, but at some point, you know, we have to put it to bed and start working on version two, uh, you know, for the future. Yes?
I'm wondering if the plan deals with sports as an issue. I know that that could go into every aspect of strategic planning as far as crippling effects, but, uh, I know within our landscape department, it takes a lot of our time and resources to deal with the sports on campus deals, but does that address in the plan at all as far as what, what's the mission of this campus towards sports?
Can you repeat the question?
Uh, yeah, the question is, does the plan address sports, uh, in, in any way explicitly? And I, you know, I, I think it's probably, uh, embedded in some, some elements, but I don't think that it's, was brought out explicitly. Well, we have here in the quality of the student experience, for example, be one way. Uh, for example, if you have objective number three, create communities through activities and programming that develop a sense of belonging and strengthen SSU traditions, that would certainly be one that, you know, it would be, that could be, I mean, it, it's, basically whenever something isn't mentioned very specifically, the relationship to a strategic plan is to make the argument that that particular activity supports some objective in the plan. Uh, and, uh, which is a way of, so it, it would be a problem if this plan didn't have, you know, if, if an activity that we know specifically is critical or we have to have, that suddenly we found that there wasn't a single objective in this plan that it could be said to be advancing. That would be a flaw in the plan, clearly. Um, I don't think that's the case with sports. I think that there, this one and several others, uh, I think that you would be able to see that, that, uh, the athletics programs, uh, do help advance those objectives, so. Susan?
Yeah, um, given the general nature of this, how do you see it implemented in a time of crisis? How do you see it as guiding decisions in a time like we are now? First, and secondly, where is, uh, governance and the relationship to joint decision-making in your plan?
Well, I think that, uh, in a time of crisis, obviously, uh, not every objective in the plan could be advanced, um, as well as it could be in other times. So there have to be some, some, uh, I would call them more tactical choices to be made in terms of what to move forward on. Um, and so that's a, that's an additional conversation. I think that, uh, rather than expect the strategic plan to be able to provide us, uh, a, a, an algorithm for, you know, making every choice for us, uh, it should be more of a framework that can help develop common language when making, you know, when carrying on conversations about how to, how to make choices. So in that sense, I don't see this, uh, as a hindrance, and in fact, I think it is, it helps us develop language and develop a, a framework with, a conceptual framework with which to, you know, have the conversations about those key decisions. Uh, the shared governance, uh, aspect of it is, is not something that's embedded in the plan itself. I would say it's, it's more of how, how did, how does, uh, what was the process by which we arrived at this plan and adopted it, how does that reflect on, on the shared governance process?
I guess I'm concerned about when you have crisis situations, that, uh, plans ought to be frameworks that have benchmarks and priorities, and then a process for discussing how you're gonna then proceed, whether it's to build up or to retrench, but it would seem like that would be doubtful. And we're seeing it right now in terms of how these processes are going forward and how the decisions are gonna be made of where we're gonna cut one point three billion or more.
Yeah.
In the next few weeks.
Right, that's, that's more of an action plan. Uh, I don't think, I don't, I doubt if you, you could take any strategic plan, uh, any established strategic plan from, um, a significant university and figure out what, you know, what the answers to those questions would be from the plan alone.
It's a section in our long-range academic plan. That's, it's a, a core universal, uh, area, and then we have a section on governance and shared decision-making. So I, I was just wanting, this is something you're gonna be targeting in the future or not?
I think it's something we need to, we need to do, obviously. Um, I, I would submit to you that, that it would be something that, um, we would have to do in a separate process than the process of developing a, a five-year strategic plan. It would be something that would be, uh, involved in our standing budgetary advisory committees as well as certainly for our division, now we have the joint committee on academic planning that is a good vehicle for having those kinds of conversations. Yes?
I used to work at San Francisco State for years and worked going through this process of strategic planning, and one of the things, one of the major goals was internationalization, and they actually threw that to the international office and said, "You guys come up with your initiatives and strategies." And one of the things that we did was, you know, we really got into specifics, after objectives and two initiatives, what are we going to do, and what are the cost breakdowns, which things are really, you know, very low cost or low cost, which things ultimately not be the first, and so we actually got very similar, but they thought deeper. And that's something you can see how hard it is. I think that, for me, as a, as a staff member, I'd just something specific that I actually get my hands on, to know that there is something besides, you know, just general stuff, that we really are going to more specific. And I'm afraid that this, maybe perhaps we may not get there, especially in my area specifically, very nervous and staffing, and it's, it's, I know what I have to do, but I don't know if anybody else does. And so if it was more specific, perhaps it would seem, so much I could be done, let's make that possible. But at this point, it's not specific enough.
Right.
You know, for that, and, um, so it's just...
Mm-hmm. Right, and that's exactly how, uh, this is meant deliberately meant to be general in the sense that it provides a context for more specific planning that takes place in the various, uh, units, schools, departments, uh, and, and offices, so.
It's, it's nice that it's public, and every, every area that's all gold from bed and its initiatives is specific, so everybody can see what other areas are doing, has a top source, it's really specific, it keeps things up.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Um, yes? Okay.
Um, this brings up a point that has stumped me as, as staff rep on the academic senate for almost three years, and as I come to the end of my term, I, I feel still stumped because I noticed last week when the news about the raises within the chancellor's office, there was more activity on staffing in terms of real discussion and outrage and a sense of being defeated, I think, by staff. And, and I, I think, when I made the comment last faculty, about two faculty senate meetings ago, when there was a resolution to praise all increases, but those for faculty, and then it was negotiated to those for unions, then I got comments from the NPPs, so, um, that, you know, they're not being protected. So I think there are issues around the, the staff of sense that we're so, um, broken up in all these different unions, and so we're competing for resources union to union. And then in the sense of who's actually advocating for the staff, the total staff, those within union and without, there really aren't people that are just focused on staff, as far as I'm understanding the commentary. And then the other thing is the sense of three sixty evaluations in the managers of most of our staff. Um, there doesn't seem to be the sense, union-wide, that managers get very much staff training. There's a lot of, I hate to use the word dysfunction, but there seems to be log jams in terms of how the managers of staffs are relating to staff, and if they feel that a position can be removed temporarily or permanently, and then people just get money, more money scattered around, and then the job is kind of parsed out, but that's good enough for the department. And meanwhile, the staff, I think, feel more and more that they're not being heard, either within unions or without, you know, outside of unions. Anyway, I kind of throw this out there because I feel it more and more within my own union and across the board through discussions on staffing, that it's, it's really becoming an issue for staff. They're feeling defeated, they're feeling tired, they're feeling that there's not gonna be much change, particularly in the, in the environment. And, and how can they communicate that, you know, and to whom can they communicate that?
Well, okay, and let me just try to, uh, capture from your comments. I mean, you, you point your finger at a number of issues, uh, some of them which transcend the process of developing a strategic plan and go to, uh, you know, how do we cope with environmental disruptions that we're facing now? But to the extent that, uh, it can inform, inform our strategic plan, I would suggest that some of the issues you're talking about would be the ones that, if we were to address in a systematic way, would in fact be advancing objective number two here under faculty and staff, which is supporting comprehensive professional development and training opportunities, uh, for, for staff. Um, and, uh, the idea being that, uh, you know, so, some of the, the issues that you're talking about, uh, could be addressed better if we had, um, some more systematic ways of training, uh, of, of, um, orienting staff and, and managers when they come in, and those kinds of things. So, yeah, that would very much be in line with, with this.
So might encourage staff to put comments about, uh, those particular issues?
Yes, uh, I think that, uh, there is beyond this, um, the, the plan's objectives here. We did have an append, I don't know if we have that appendix here, let's see. Yeah, this appendix C, potential initiatives and activities, uh, is a fairly long list of mo, of more concrete things that could be done, see, for all these areas, including this one. Uh, and, uh, that would be a place where concrete suggestions would be added. And so this becomes like a database of possible ways to follow up on.
Thank you.
Laura?
Um, I'm switching that, I'm really interested in that overall conceptual stuff. And I know the U of U hasn't done a lot of work, it's really terrific and it looks really good, but I was reading the, the vision and the values. I was, those were really interesting to me. And I put a post on Cafe, but I'm like, you guys haven't read it yet, so I'll tell you about what I posted there. But I thought one of the values that we might wanna consider, and I'm not sure if this would change a whole lot of what you've written or not, maybe just something to add in, is collaboration. And, um, I attended a conference where I got some interesting information about the role of collaboration in the business world right now. And not that we have to model the business world, but that it's something that our students might engage in, you know, our students might go into the world where collaboration is really important and that we could model that in how we work in the university. So that's something that I thought would be interesting to have in there. Um, and to me, the respect one is kind of a given. I'm not sure why that's there. I might like to hear you guys talk about that, what that's about, but I mean, to me, that's a given, and I think maybe collaboration might be more interesting to have in there. The other thing on the, on the vision was, I, I, I don't mean to be critical, but the vision is really un-visionary. It's, it doesn't inspire me to anything. It's, it's really, you know, it's not visionary to me, frankly. I mean, I, you know, it's kind of like, yeah, isn't that kind of what we're doing? Is it, is the plan supposed to be talking about what we're doing? Because like, when I read the vision, it said what we aspire to. So to me, that was like an opportunity to say, hey, what do we really wanna be, you know? And then I read that, and it was kind of like, couldn't we do better than that? So I'd like to hear the group maybe talk about how the values were developed, how the vision was developed. and how the vision was developed, you know, with the comment.
Mm-hmm. Any, any comments on that, on Laurel's question, uh, from our other committee members?
I have a question that's in line with hers. Since we shifted, we're now in a new, a whole new reality from the time you put this together. Have you guys met to talk about a new reality? You know, we're opening a new chapter, as Jay Dino says, there's chapter 11.
No, we haven't met since the, since the, the economy tanked, no. Art, do you have any thoughts on that? You, you're, you're one of the people that probably has the most continuity besides me on this process.
Well, actually, on the collaboration thing, it seems to me we did talk about it at one point. I'm not sure how it dropped out, but I think, I think one of the things that the, uh, both parts of the conversation are suggesting is that, that the next meeting is gonna have to be a fairly serious meeting. And, uh, it would be important to have it really well prepared and serious with considering the kinds of comments we're getting and whatnot. And I think, and I would expect that there will be some revisions because of so long since this guy has been in the process. So I, um, I'd like to do it in one meeting and I'd like to see the meeting be a fairly serious conversation.
Um, Barbara?
I'm just very curious of, of the, how the conversation evolved around the issue of diversity. Because it, it seems to me that as, in, in the time I've been on this campus, diversity has been kind of a core part of everything we do, a part of the fabric. It's what brought me here in Italy. It was one of the few campuses in 1980 in which there was a strong commitment to diversity. It was, it was a lot of the visioning of the faculty who helped put this place together. And I'm, I'm curious because it feels like diversity ended up as, as its own segment rather than, a- as I saw initially, and I, I can't keep track of which version I saw last, um, that it seemed like it got set aside and then, um, at least in the place it was last year, the, the objectives were fairly narrow in comparison to what we could do. And I'm hoping, as Prologis De Cho has been talking of, the, the next big version, but maybe there would be opportunities with these two brand-new committees to have some of the language be reflected of, of some of those wider concerns or some of the, the thinking that's gone on. I know that a significant number of the president's diversity committee actually attended a conference and, and maybe some of that thinking could be reflected back. I, I would hope diversity would continue to be part of the, the wove and the warp of what we do here rather than, and now we're looking at diversity as a separate piece.
I can respond directly to that because I was pretty actively involved in that discussion. And, and at one point, the argument was that diversity is such an important aspect of everything that, um, do we need a separate section? But then the other argument is, if it's really serious, then we need a separate section. But part of the idea behind that was that every strategic goal area would have implications for all the others. And I think in terms of the question that you're raising, I think, uh, whether it's this cycle or the next cycle, I think the work of those committees can actually spell out in considerable greater detail how diversity goal should be reflected in all the other areas.
Or at least the possibility of an objective in each of those areas that addresses it, uh, uh, if not directly, then at least in part.
Yeah, I chaired that task force and talked with a lot of people about diversity. And we had, oh, I think maybe 20 initiatives. And so when you just look at the, the goal and the objectives, it really doesn't give you the, the depth of what it is that we really talked about. But I think adding what's more current thinking at this time is a very good idea. What's the subcommittee's working?
Back there, yes.
Are those objectives available somewhere?
Yeah, they're called initiatives.
Okay, great.
I'm following Ms. Blubed and her comment about making the study. Um, I just wanted to comment that regarding Laurel's comment, that, that this is a, a document that may, maybe it lacks a little bit of punch or real commitment to some thread throughout. I mean, it might be read it that way. But that people have commented on globalization, collaboration, diversity, uh, just here today. And that, that sustainability might be thrown in there. And then maybe, you know, rewriting of the document, some of these could be highlighted to help with a greater emphasis or commitment to those issues, uh, to allow us to be a document that moves us, that is a planning document that then helps us later with resources. But as it is now, perhaps, and it's per reading, it maybe lacks underscoring or, or, you know, some sort of, what would seem like a greater commitment to some of those issues. And so out of, based on comments that others write, in fact, that can be tweaked in some way, if that's really how people feel or not really what faculty and staff believe should be there.
Yeah, let me just make a comment here that this process, you know, the committee is a large committee and had a number of different constituencies. And so there was a tendency for this to be the product of a committee. Uh, and so certain edges, certain sharpness was polished off. For example, just to give you an example in terms of Laurel's, um, um, point about the mission. Um, if you go here, um, the vision statement that we, um, started out was basically trying to say in a provocative way that we were going to have sort of global impact through our, um, our liberal arts-based, you know, undergraduate programs fundamentally, and that we were gonna be using our professional programs primarily to serve the community, and that we were gonna act as a university to be a catalyst for the transformation of this region. So the word progress used to be a word transformation, you know, which I think had, has more. But some people objected to it. They didn't want Sonoma County transformed. They wanted it to stay the way it was. So we had to use the word progress to make it sound a little less controversial. So some of that is what, what happens, you know, when you, when you come up with a document that, that has to please all the constituencies in the university. So we, that's why, when I, I mentioned earlier that this, there's really two, two, I, I see two flavors of strategic plan. One is the one that says, you know, this is gonna, this plan is gonna, is gonna give us a guide to what to say no to. So that, excuse me, so that we can focus on a few key things that we're gonna move on and be really focused about that and get some very significant results. So that's, that's a plan that is relatively narrow, but, you know, but, but goes in depth. The other kind of plan is the one that basically is, represents the entire community, gives, uh, you know, appropriate weight to all of the different things that we do day in and day out, uh, and also has room for new initiatives. And that plan by definition doesn't look, doesn't grab you by the throat the way a much more narrowly focused one would. And, you know, this is one that particularly for the first cycle for an institution, it's almost impossible to get away from doing this kind of plan. Because everybody wants, you know, everybody wants their fingerprints on it. Everybody wants to see that somehow or another their, their area has received some recognition. And so you go through that and then over time, as the, as we become more comfortable with, with strategic planning as a process and people begin to understand, you know, how we can use it to give us maybe a little more specific guidance in terms of, you know, let's prioritize three things, you know, for the next, you know, five years and make some meaningful progress there before we turn to the next three things. Uh, it takes a while for people to come around to that way of looking at the planning process. Yes?
Yeah, I just wanna make a couple of comments. One is that I think Scott's point about the learning how to have a culture of plan is, is an important point. And rather than perfecting this document, a lot of it, you know, as soon as this document's perfected, as you said, we start working on version two.
Yep.
Uh, the other comment that I wanted to make was on the initiative section. And, um, we agreed to keep the initiative section in because it had so many concrete good ideas. But rather than, we didn't wanna institutionalize it as part of the core document because, just because that's a set of good ideas, there may be other good ideas that would be equally important. So it's more kind of an information and a stimulus thinking kind of attachment to the plan. But it's a place where a lot of the concerns that you were raising and others would come into play.
It's this one here. Yes, Scott?
Well, just to shift us a little bit, I guess I'm, one of the things that I'm turning my thought thinking to is longer-term and, um, I think there's a, a question for you, especially Bart. What, uh, what would closing the loop on this, like, how, I guess another way to put that would be, how would we know at, at the end of five years whether our strategic plan would work or, um, serve its purpose? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
What, um, just a few comments about that.
Well, um, I think that, um, one way that, that this plan could retrospectively be seen as useful is the extent to which, uh, planning and, and decisions, um, by divisions and schools, departments, and other units has been framed and influenced by this plan. Uh, that would be a very important outcome. And, uh, another one would be if the plan also directly led to, uh, the adoption of certain initiatives that could only be pursued university-wide, and we do have some, uh, then, you know, the, that would be an outcome to the fact that, you know, this provided us with the, the language and the framework to identify these things as priorities and they were moved on, uh, so that'd be another one. And, and the other, the other one is, uh, the more, you know, sort of process or experiential one, which is to say if, uh, at the end of the, if the next time around that we do, when we do this planning, the level of sophistication and, um, and effectiveness and attentionality of the process of developing the next plan exhibited by the campus community shows that the first cycle was a positive educational experience for all of us. That'd be another outcome.
Can I follow up? So, um, I think I know the answer to this question, but, but do I understand really sort of correctly by that, uh, a strategic plan is not really sort of like a set of learning outcomes? Like, it's, it's not the kind of thing that at the end of the five years, we really look back and say, oh, we gave us, we didn't give ourselves a C on that or, or that we did these things, didn't do these things. I mean, what, do you expect that in five years, there will be a, a formal kind of assessment process of our strategic plan? Maybe that's more speculative than, than what's paired for, yeah, but.
Yeah, I, you know, strategic planning was around before the whole learning outcomes thing really took off. And so the idea of assessing, uh, I mean, that language was not usually used. Uh, you'd have to, clearly, if you've identified some objectives, uh, you want at some point or another to decide, well, how, how are we doing in, in meeting those objectives? Uh, and, and, uh, in that sense, you know, you, you do have to take the pulse of the institution and figure out whether or not you've made those, you've met those objectives. Now, I'm not sure that that itself is an assessment of the plan or the process of making the plan. That could very well be just a question of, you know, well, did we, you know, were, were we able to get the resources to do it? Did the people that were charged with, uh, with, uh, following up on these objectives, uh, do it, do their job? Uh, so basically, the plan gives you a framework for assessing the work of the institution. I suppose to assess the plan itself, you know, would be more like, was the plan confusing? Did it give any, did it fail to give, to influence in a, in a constructive way? You know, how people went about prioritizing and organizing themselves to, to achieve results.
One more thing, if I could just weigh in on that. I think that, I think this is an important point as we think about purpose of planning. And I think that how, and how we build a culture of planning, I would argue very much against seeing this as an assessable document. I mean, I think we obviously at the end, you know, at various points along the way, have to ask ourselves, how are we doing, you know, kind of, where are we now? But, but it doesn't strike me, it strikes me that, that, that developing a strategic plan, strategic plan is use, is a useful, um, uh, kind of cultural element. And it's, and it's useful in and of itself. I don't think that it's the same, it doesn't seem to me that it is the same thing as a kind of, um, an outcome statement. That, that would be my position on it. And I, I think that, I think it's the kind of thing that, that it is sort of a temperature taken at a certain moment in time. And, and then later on, we take the temperature again, both how are we doing? What do we wanna do in addition to, or further, or? That it is not a kind of, here's what we wanna do, how do we do it? Here's what, do you see what I mean? It's sort of a subtle distinction, but that would be, that would be my.
Well, if we step back farther and we may try and make it a very simple, straightforward sort of metaphor would be to say that it's, it's kind of a roadmap.
Yeah.
Where, you know, and in order to have a roadmap, you have to know where you are, point A. You have to know where you wanna go, point B. And then the roadmap will give you some, some sketches of what might be on the way or how you, what you have to do to get there. But clearly, when you're on the road, you know, you can find out stuff that wasn't on the map.
Yeah.
You know, like a tree falls over, uh, and you gotta go around, you know? And so that's basically what's, how, uh, how it works. In, in the real world where you actually have to make choices about what road to actually take and so forth, uh, you have to look at, you know, and, and conditions change. So the, the roadmap provides some guide, some framework, but it's not the whole story. Yes?
With the demise of the Orange Book, we had, it was, however flawed, a structural device around which we could organize our campus and the CSU. In the absence of that, oh, where in this plan is there an articulation of the parts, particularly the majors and programs relative to the rest of the institution? And how is that, um, it's essential to the mission, so how is that inherent in everything that's being done here?
Well, that would be an academic plan, is what, what we're talking about. An academic master plan, if you will, which is not the same as a stra-. The reason the word strategic is put in front of the plan is not just a rhetorical flourish. There's a real difference between a strategic plan and a plan.
But shouldn't you define what your academic relationship is in your strategic plan, is my point?
Uh, not necessarily.
Really?
I mean, that, that, no, because it's, I mean, it's basically, the plan that you're talking about is essentially an inventory of all of our academic programs and a year-by-year sort of.
No, no, I'm talking about the mission. The academic programs at the heart of the mission that we have. So at, in some place in the strategic plan, it ought to be weighted, not articulated, but just there so it can be weighted relative to the other parts. Does that make sense? Or it, my question is, is it, is it in this? You, in JCAP, we talked about nested dolls. And whatever the outside nesting doll is, is gonna constrain every doll within it. And so it's important that the various levels are articulated among themselves and that's what generates my question.
Okay, I think in that sense, um, the, this provides a very broad framework for academic planning to take place within our, the Division of Academic Affairs. And it shows up, first of all, there are objectives, overarching objectives here in this section. And then also even more fundamentally is in the, uh, the mission and the vision.
I guess what I found missing there was more of a mention of our liberal arts and sciences mission in key strategic areas, um.
Well, if you have some suggestions on how that might.
Yeah, I do.
I'd be happy to take them.
And I'll take up our time for that, yeah.
Okay. Any other comment, comments, questions? Any other comment, comments, questions? Yes?
Just kind of responding to a lot of the comments I've heard, just a teeny little voice on committee. I think if I understood what we were doing correctly, I, I sort of think the strategic plan was more a statement about what we want to be rather than what we want to do. That's kind of the distinction I'm seeing in the comments, that strategic plan was more, we, all, all along the way, lots of times, we talked about specific things that we might do to achieve some part of the vision. But we kind of specifically left specifics, oh, that was a terrible sentence. We, we, we intentionally moved specifics to a different part of the document because while you can't stop thinking about, well, specifically, does it spell out that we're going to, um, establish a training program for use of Dream Weaver, just to come up with a random name. More, we wanted to say, what is our vision of who we are? And everything we do would come out of who we are, so that if you see what you want to be rather than what you want to do, it was more a document saying, this is what we want to be, so that this guide our decisions on what we want to do. Which is, I think, why, why some people are saying, well, what did you have in mind for this, or how are we going to do that? We, we couldn't stop talking about those things, but I think we intentionally said that, that isn't really what we want as part of the strategic plan.
Very good. Thank you for that comment. Yes?
I have a very small comment to go back to the diversity piece, and it's really just to ask a question. As I looked at the, um, objective section, there was nothing there about recruiting and retaining a diverse faculty and staff. So, if you look at the specifics.
There it is, right here.
Okay. That's now impossible to read from this distance. If you get involved, and we can't read it from here.
Okay.
Okay, so it's. Accommodated enrollment growth. But that. I think the fact that it's not, there's no mention of faculty and staff specifically in the diversity sec-, so it's embedded elsewhere.
Hmm. That's what we, as Art said, we do both. We had a separate section, but also.
Okay, I just wanted, as I'm trying to make sense of it, because I'm gonna, yeah, I'm sure that the.
I was suggesting. I was suggesting, at some point, the color code that you're like referencing is discussed.
You could do that. I think another question back behind you first, yes?
I just want to comment on, you want to comment about the vision, because I, I was struck reading that, and I agree with you. When I think, when I think of the word progress, I think of the twenties. People use that word a lot to talk about, you know, future determinants of the American dream and all of that. And it's really a word that doesn't, I think transformation or something like that, given this Obama age and the rhetoric he's using, the love letter I got from Obama and Michelle last week for donating my fifty bucks to the campaign, it made me cry. And I think we could reach for something that's a little bit more, um, definitive of who we are as a, I like the idea of community, but then it's like progress out of the community, it just doesn't seem to really be.
Well, I, I personally like transformation.
Yeah, something like that, but, and I bet, maybe if you went back to the folks that disagreed at that point then, that they wouldn't necessarily disagree now because of. The bottom shift that our.
I know, I can, I, I can tell you precisely what it was, but I won't say it.
And it's one I definitely need to tell us.
But it was, it was a, it was a senator. It was a, an academic senate member who objected to that.
Well, you need to tell us.
I have a good, I think I objected to it too.
Did you?
Well, I just think progress is the best.
Yeah, progress is more, well, progress is more mealy mouthed, because then you can interpret it any way you like.
And it's really time-based. I mean, we could get out of the idea of linear time, if we could move to a bigger word that we're not necessarily going to talk about A, B, or something, you know, plus.
The idea was, I mean, and, and that's one of the reasons why I, I didn't push on transformation was because when the word transformation was put in there, and I will admit that I came up with the phrasing that included the word transformation initially, what I had in mind was that Sonoma County is, is going through a qualitative transformation as a community right now, and that the university can help guide and steward that process. And the problem is that that makes some people who would like to keep Sonoma County the way it is and not become, you know, because they associate that kind of transformation with growth, you know, and the loss of, you know, pastoral idyllic setting, that kind of thing. So that's, that issue became sort of, you know, um, that's what, that, that, that word became associated with that, that.
And progress didn't hit them that way?
Progress seemed to be more, um, I mean, less threatening, I don't know. I mean, or maybe they just didn't look at it after they made that comment. It's a possibility.
The word progress, I believe, I have to pull out a dictionary, but I believe that progress means a positive change, whereas transformation could be, you know, it could be transformed by an atomic bomb too.
That was part of it too, yeah. Laura?
I'd like to just point out that you're focusing on one word in this vision, and my comment is about the whole thing.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, um, you know, talking about whether we're going to use the word progress or transformation to be, and missing the point of the whole thing doesn't inspire me personally to any, like, is, is this really what Sonoma State wants to be? This vision, I mean, I was, as I was thinking about it, to come, to come to this for two days, I was thinking, does Sonoma State want to be a leader? Does Sonoma want to be leadership in the community for, you know, these, these interesting inner intersections of things that are happening in the twenty-first century? And how we prepare our students to meet those, and how we meet those ourselves, or, I don't know, I was just trying to think of what is it, you know, yeah, what is our vision of, what, what do we want to be? And I think that, 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 you know, maybe you guys have had that discussion a lot in your, in your committee, but I'm not sure that, I think we've talked around that a lot on campus in different forums, but we've never really addressed that s- real specific. And we talked about what made us distinguish as a school, and, you know, things like that, but, you know, this, and it's, and it's asquiring statement, it's not like who we are now, but who we want to be, you know. It's like, I'd really like to see that happen.
Let me see if I can find.
Well, right now, it's just the, the residential students in that mission statement, the way it's laid out currently. So we need to change that a little bit. But the other thing I think we need to also, like, I, I agree, the mission statement is not as powerful as one would like it, but we're looking at a strategic plan for the entire university, because that's all the academic departments, that's all the administration of finance, every, it's everything. Which means, I know my department's going to go back and we're going to relook at what our mission is, what our vision is, and we're going to revamp it. And then the office that I work in will look at our mission and our plans, and we'll revamp that. And that's where we can, we can hit the students that read it, we can hit the parents when they read it with what we truly are about. We've got a strategic plan again, it encompasses the entire university. That's, that's big, that's huge. How can we, how can we come up with the words that's going to encompass everything and not leave anything out? And I don't know if that's a possibility.
Well, I'm having problems with my computer here. I was trying to open up the Academic Affairs strategic plan, because I think we had a vision statement there that sort of hearkens to some of this, but I can't seem to get it to open. Yeah, I think we had originally, I, I seem to recall phrasing that talked about us, about Sonoma State University being a catalyst for regional transformation. Yeah, catalyst is still there, yeah. And so the vision captured some of this. Uh, this is another way, by the way, in which the academic, you know, the academic core is embedded in the larger plan, so that's, that's a good thing, I think. Yes?
Um, I was on the committee, I have zero position of power on this campus. I have been involved in a number of strategic planning processes. And, um, so I would like to say a few things. One is, for this university to be doing this for the first time is a tremendous undertaking. And I applaud the committee for the work that they've done, because it's a great first start, it really is. And it isn't going to meet everyone's needs, and it isn't going to be perfect. It's not going to have all the right words, it's not going to have all the right things in it. It probably has, has too many things. Next time around, it can be looked at, it can be known, it can be made more perfect, it will never be perfect. I do think it's important, in any kind of planning process, that you do look at not just the process, how did the process work for us, but also what's in it. And a couple of people have mentioned, um, this is very high level. Divisions, schools, departments need to use this document as their tool for creating their mission, their vision, their objectives, and their action plan. And somehow there, there even needs to be some accountability, um, that schools and divisions and departments do that. You know, otherwise, why would you spend all this time and effort creating a strategic plan? Also, uh, with regard to respect, um, I used to work at a company that had respect as one of its values. And you do tend to think, well, it should be a given, but it's not. It's not a given. It's definitely not a given on this university. I work in an apartment where we feel a lot of disrespect. We had, um, a vote of no confidence for our president, so some people think the president doesn't respect them, some people don't respect the president. I don't think it's a given on this university plan, it's a given. I, I just, I, you know, ultimately, I want to say yay. Yay committee for the work that you've done. And at some point, soon, hopefully, we get to draw the line and call it done. So, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. You said something that I, I specifically wanted to answer, but I, uh, forgotten what it was. Okay, any other comments?
Are you going to articulate the process for the future in terms of what you envision planning to be? In other words, we're talking about this now, we're having the forum, but it would be helpful to have built into a strategic plan that annually it will be refreshed, or as we build out our planning structure, that revisiting all parts of it should be included.
Yes, okay. Yeah, but that, thank you for that, because I do have something else to show you. And specifically on this last comment, the accountability issue I wanted to respond to. And, uh, let me just give you, um, an example of how this kind of planning, this kind of plan can help with accountability. Uh, in the case of the Academic Affairs strategic plan, which we completed a while back, and it's also very general, maybe even too general. But nevertheless, uh, it, uh, once the plan was in place, uh, the deans started using it as a framework for articulating their goals and objectives for the coming year. And so it became the basis on which their performance was evaluated by me and the president. And in, in fact, it was, the president was impressed enough by that, that that's when he asked me to work with Larry in developing this university planning process, essentially following that template. So, uh, I think that that's, that's where it happens, I think, is that it gives, it helps give structure to the, the kind of specific planning that has measurable outcomes that people are getting evaluated on regularly. Yes?
A, a quick suggestion, when we have a plan in place, it would be really valuable to share it as we have gatherings of new faculty and new employees, um, that this is what our culture is, these are the things we value, here's our vision. And we're thrilled to have you and see the ways in which you can support this. I'm remembering early on those gatherings, particularly for, for new staff, that used to happen on a monthly basis. So that they were included in not just as part of their individual departments, but part of the larger community. And, um, I, I saw that as a valuable way in which we created community across the divisions. And I, I yearn to see more of that, more than just, you know, our annual holiday party, which is probably the largest place in which we all come together. Um, not all staff are able to attend. It's for faculty more, and staff are invited, but, you know, our, our, uh, groundskeepers aren't there, our landscapers aren't there, the studio staff aren't there.
I'm sorry about the, this thing being so slow. I, I appreciate that comment, by the way, it's, that, that's a goo-, a good one to follow up on. I wanted to show, I think this is it. Yeah, um, this is what the process that we expect to follow us of now, this is the way we've articulated it. Um, the plan at the university level, and this one actually is just for Academic Affairs, but you could, I thought I had another one that showed, instead of Academic Affairs, it'd be a divisional plan. And then instead of schools, it would be, you know, the next level down in terms of the units within a division and so on. And then there's feedback loops going up, so it's bottom up, I mean, top down, bottom up. And then the results of all of this, of all of the, um, outcomes of implementing these plans, and which is that the dotted line, that, all that feeds into the internal resources, that is one of the two main determinants of what you can do the next cycle, the other one being the external environment. And of course, the mission feeds into it as well. So that's the process. And then we have, and I think, you know, Susan, you've seen this, uh, like, other people may have not seen it. We've shown this one already, but, there is, um, uh, there it goes again. Maybe you can find it, no. Oh, great, um. Well. There's another one for Academic Affairs that took some detail at the five-year cycle versus the one-year cycle of planning. And for, for Academic Affairs, uh, it basically ties into program review as well, um. I think it's in here. Yeah, okay. I'll show you this and then I'll stop. Come on. It, um, it basically has, it ch-, it shows that every, there's a five-year cycle for strategic planning, and then there's an annual cycle for planning, uh, all the way down to the department level. And the, the five-year strategic planning cycle, in effect, is a five-year program review cycle for the departments. So it all feeds, and they're all connecting that way. I don't know why this isn't opening. I don't know why this isn't opening. I don't know why my computer's tight. Sorry, I apologize. Okay, well, I'm throwing in the towel here on the computer. Uh we've probably run out of time, yes, we have. So thank you very much for all of your input. Appreciate it.